I call the meeting order for November 20, 2024. Stateful pledge. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we're going to go into a public forum here for the York County Sheriff's Department. Information will be here. We've got Bill King. They kind of enlighten us. We've got some questions, I'm sure, so.
You know, basically, there's three nine towns and cities in York County, and we patrol fourteen of them. And I would say that the Acton and Shapley, along with a few others, have taken the proactive step to contract with the sheriff's office. This provides forty hours of dedicated patrol. We feel it's a very, very effective program. But I understand that there, I listened to the public comments a couple of weeks ago. There's some concerns, and frankly, you know, we, you know, we want to, we want to be here. And, you know, that I have the patrol commander, I have the chief deputy, and the contract deputy that's here. So we're here to answer any questions at all that, that the public might have. And frankly, thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to do so. It's always best to be here, you know, when we hear the comments ourselves. So we're here, it's kind of a, we were trying to have a little bit of a presentation with the statistics in case that comes up, but.
This is all set, Chair.
We're all set.
Go ahead, I don't want to minimize and show your desktop, because I don't know what's on there. But if you want to just minimize and figure out where your program is.
Okay, yep, great.
Thank you, Jennifer, for getting that working.
I'm just gonna, I'm gonna, you know, something, as the questions come up, we'll, I can certainly go through this, I can find the answers, or would you rather have me, I should ask the chair, would you rather have me just sort of go through briefly about what I have?
Why don't you go through a real brief?
That way they can get to the.
And that much awesome questions. Perfect, thank you very much, sir. So basically, you know, again, County Acton, we feel is a very special place. And I just put these up here just to kind of show, you know, that we do cover Acton and Shapley. It's really just right about the same. The important thing I want you folks to see, though, is that if you look at self-initiated and dispatched, self-initiated, that means that the contract deputy is here finding things. And, and, and basically, just, you know, he's finding things, he's making traffic stops. So I think that's very, very important. It's also important to look at the average arrival time. Now, I think these are for all the deputies, not just the contract deputy, but fourteen minutes is pretty gosh darn good in a rural area. Because some of these calls, we can't go blue lights inside them. So maybe, so I think that having a contract deputy clearly affects that arrival time. The other important thing to look at is time on scene. You know, if you watch any type of police shows, you know, cops, they're in, bing bang boom, and they're out of there. I mean, we, time on scene here, you know, it's, in Acton, it's twenty-six minutes. And this is average, and Shapley was eighteen, this was in, the red is two thousand twenty-two. And it's basically the same, you know, throughout two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four.
Bill, if I could ask a question, is there some reason for the time on scene being more in Acton than Shapley? True for all the years, and it's almost, almost twenty-five percent more.
Yeah, well, because Acton is more trouble, I'm joking. No, it's, no, we just, I, just the way it worked out, sir. You know, it's just the way it worked out. I mean, I didn't do an in-depth analysis of the types of calls. But, I mean, just for an example, police work is a funny animal. The other day, Sean, how long were you on that particular call with that individual from Acton that put fire and all that stuff? How long did you spend on that particular call, sir?
So you're talking about the yellow flag call?
Yes.
And the burning car and all that jazz?
Correct.
Okay, I started dealing with that at around ten o'clock in the morning is when the car lit up. And by the way, combination of the street and the car burning, I had a suspect right then. I'm like, okay, that's a dead-end street. There's only one problem child along the road, so I had a good idea who it was. I suspect he's mentally ill. That was ten o'clock in the morning. I got home at eleven o'clock that night from that call. Because I dealt with that person all day. There's a manhunt for him, dealing with the fire marshal's office, dealing with the car arson that was an arson. And by the time we got him to Costin, we got him to the hospital, went through the yellow flag process, which is basically having him go through a mental health process where we go through a judge and that kind of thing. And then remove his firearms because we think he's a threat to public safety. That whole process, and I had to call another deputy for help. This is such a threat to me at the hospital. I couldn't do the yellow flag process in my computer while he's dancing around and giving a sermon. I know I'm going more in-depth than the sheriff wanted me to, but I wanted you guys to understand what I went through that day. Ten o'clock in the morning, about thirteen hours later, I walked into my house and was able to get the stuff off and start getting ready to go back.
I kind of want to focus on one thing, though, Sean. You said as soon as it happened, you knew who it was. Why, how did you know who it was?
Because this is my town. It's, I've been dealing with him for a while, you know, for, he popped up. He popped up magically out of Rochester, had some things going on. I did my homework, I made some calls, found out that he's been assaulted toward state troopers in New Hampshire and Rochester Police and a real threat. He's got a traumatic brain injury, and I just did my homework on him. And that particular road, nothing happens there. I'm sorry, nothing happens there. He's living there now. So I have a car catch on fire. I'm not Sherlock Holmes, but sometimes the stuff works out, I don't look like it.
See, these are the things that, these are the things that you can't capture with statistics, that he knew who that person was. If this happened in a town that doesn't have a contract deputy, there would have been four rolls of investigation to find out who it was. He knew who it was and was able to yellow flag, which is a complicated process. And I commend you for the work that you did on that. Great. I mean, that's the whole thing, you know, we were able to do more follow-up investigations. I didn't get into the whole, you know, with all the statistics. But we were able to do a lot more follow-up investigations with a contract deputy, you know, the building checks, checks, and the enhanced traffic enforcement. And I know that Acton, the town leaders are very interested in traffic enforcement, and we can do a lot of traffic enforcement when you have dedicated patrols in the town. The, you know, again, you know, we're looking at, the, first of all, let me just apologize to you. I know how to do basic PowerPoint. And I used this PowerPoint that somebody else did in two thousand fifteen. And when you put the numbers in, I thought it would make the little bars go up by themselves, and it didn't. So these things are all messed up. But I think the key is that I want to say is the self-initiated, you know, to the, to the dispatch and the total calls, this is a horrible slide, and I wish I didn't put it out. So I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna move on. You know, again, we talked about, I think it's important, you know, the on-scene time for two thousand twenty-four has been twenty-two minutes, the arrival time is under fifteen minutes. But again, some of those, those calls, you can't go blue lights inside them. So we just have to proceed with the normal flow of traffic. We do, you know how busy it gets up here in the summertime, I think that goes without saying. In two thousand twenty-four, we, we looked at four burglaries. Four, that was it. Four burglaries, I think that's really important for a town this size. Motor vehicle crashes, the time on scene, it took us, excuse me, nine, less than ten minutes to get there, we were there normally thirty-seven minutes. Unattended tests took us twenty minutes to get there and fifty-seven minutes normally. And again, these are just the, some statistics that I think just kind of show. Again, the burglaries, two thousand twenty-two, we had three, two thousand twenty-three, five, two thousand twenty-four, four. You've had a contract deputy for a long time. Sean is an outstanding law enforcement officer. You folks have an outstanding contract deputy. Any, all these towns, they really study, all of the contract deputies study their towns. But I will tell you, though, that, that Sean, when things happen, he typically knows who it is. I believe that people avoid doing pop one crimes in Acton mainly because you have that law enforcement presence. We can, we can start getting into the statistics of what the, what all the, you know, what all the calls are, we can do all that stuff. I've got, you know, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. I thought I would just bore you, but I'm up to do that. So I want you to look at, what, why do we pay, we already pay, right? You guys pay your county taxes, so why do you have to pay another hundred bucks? Well, I want you to take a look at this. Acton pays four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. So it's basically two percent, twenty-nine towns and cities in York County. And this is what you folks pay, four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. So if we, I, I want you to look at that number, you're about thirteen, you're right in the middle of where, of the York County towns. But I think it's important to look at, let's just look at York. York pays two point seven million dollars. They never see a York County deputy. And frankly, very few people go to Chi from York. So I just want to kind of keep that in perspective that, you know, I, I think you use us, I think Acton uses our services, you're paying four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. Are we asking you to pay another, you're late. We're asking you to pay another hundred thousand dollars, you know, for the, whatever it comes out to for a contract deputy. I, I don't think that's too much of a stretch. So where does my money go? Where does that four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars go? Well, it's right here. You know, so basically, all that money that you folks pay, fourteen, fifteen percent of it go to the sheriff's office for the general patrol. But what do you get for the general patrol? Well, I mean, Sean can't be here twenty-four seven, you pay for twenty hours. So all the other deputies that are here, you're paying fifteen, basically, of the money that you pay, fifteen percent of it. The jail is another big, jails are expensive. I'm never gonna say jail isn't expensive, and of the money you pay, forty-one percent of it goes to a jail. So this is kind of it, this is, this is where we are. I certainly, I welcome any conversations that you want to have about, you know, the, the tenants or law enforcement or community policing or whatever it is that we do. And I'm here, the chief is here, the patrol commander is here, and Sean is here. I think that alone demonstrates our commitment to Acton. And again, I really, we really appreciate the opportunity to be here.
All set?
All set, sir.
Well, any questions or comments?
I do, I do have a question. So you have numbers up there as to the average arrival time for a contract deputy? Do you have any statistics for average arrival time for towns that don't have a contract deputy?
That's a great question, Dan. I, I don't have, I didn't get that in depth. But I can tell, anecdotally, you know, anecdotally, it's, it's more. I mean, you, you know, I mean, there's other contract towns, I don't want to name them, but it takes, look, we had a call one time in a non-contract town, someone was having a baby. By the time we got there, the child answered the door. No, it, I don't have those numbers, but I, I can. Sean, please.
Can I, can I, can I say something?
Oh, please.
Mr. Sam, would you come up here so that you can get on the camera?
Sure.
This was your, I wouldn't have said anything.
I'll, I'll go over here to the chair. I just had some, I just had some things. So every, every contract town has what we call a substation, a little office. They vary, this one is more like a little closet that we have. But in there, I've got a desk and a PC, so I can do my work in there. So I don't have to go all the way back to headquarters in Alfred, because you don't want me responding when I'm doing a report about, you know, whatever I had to do a report. You don't want me coming from Alfred every time. I have to go down there once in a while, but it just so happens, Acton provided me with a substation right across the street. And it's right, I can jump off in any direction if I'm down there. And, you know, Orundel's got one, Waterboro's got one, but that keeps us in town. And the other advantage of the substation, aside from me, is all the other deputies will use that substation. So it's, it's like a lightning rod for your town. So, for example, when I'm not working typically, I hate to tell you this, but the zone deputy that covers Acton is also covering Lebanon and Newfield. Well, you can figure out where he is most of, most of that shit, it's not in Acton. But if he's going to do paver work, he can come up here and he can use the substation a lot easier and kind of stay in his zone. And he can jump off into Lebanon quicker from here than he can from Alfred. So that's, I just wanted to talk about the substation and how that brings, that keeps the contract deputy in town better, so.
Oh, very good, yeah. I think that's a, that's a valid point. Oh, sorry, Dan, does that sort of answer our community?
I mean, kind of, but not really, I was hoping for more like actual numbers to keep to pair, but.
I'm sorry, not to interrupt, but they need to be standing at the podium, the live feed is not picking them up by your law enforcement.
Oh, sorry.
They're standing at the podium.
Well, I figured I'd just give them up here.
Yeah, no, they will.
Okay. Are they getting my back?
They will now.
Oh, no.
All right, all right. All right. I do have a hall squat, and I'm a little sensitive.
So you have some questions?
Do you want to sit up front with them?
Yeah, whatever they question, sorry, I'm, I'm good. Where do you want me, folks?
Right there, that's good.
Okay.
Okay, you got some questions?
Yeah, so I have questions, Sheriff King, that were not written by me. Sorry for that, a resident brought them in, so when I use the word "I," just keep that in mind. All right, so we're gonna start at the bottom. So as far as I know, they have never caught any of the cars tearing up the roads, laying down rubber, and doing donuts after midnight. Wouldn't we better, be better off installing cameras and asking residents nearby to help with their cameras rather than coverage because you're not catching anyone tearing up the roads?
Well, you know, traffic is, you know, a couple of years ago when I was out campaigning, all I heard about was traffic, 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 traffic. And I can tell you something, when I first joined the sheriff's office twelve years ago, I remember going down the hallway where the detectives are, and there was a huge list of unsolved burglaries. We even had like four or five home invasions. And you know, when I, when people, say, I have this car, say, anything else? No, with the cars. I kind of take it as a win. I do, I, this is a serious thing, it's a quality of life issue. But I don't know how to solve it, frankly. I don't think cameras are gonna stop somebody from tearing up the road. We can't be everywhere. As a matter of fact, it, it's such an issue that we have an initiative at the sheriff's office that we've been doing a couple of year, couple of years now. People will call and they'll say, this car was going fast or driving erratically. And what we'll do is we'll get the plate, if they get the plate number, of course, we'll write to that person and say, hey, listen, your car, it's non-accusatory. Your vehicle was reported as driving erratically. If, you know, please take this as a basic warning, or if you know who was driving the vehicle, just give them that warning also, please. What we also do is we also write to the person that called us, thanking them for being our eyes and ears out there. So I, I understand this moment, I, this is a, it's valid, I wouldn't like it if somebody was tearing up the roads in front of my house, but all I can say is call. Call when it happens, try to get a plate number, try to get a description, tell the dispatcher when that happens. But it's, I just, I don't know any other way, I don't know any law enforcement agency that has a magic bullet for some, for those types of calls.
Do you want to?
You want to go to the public's evidence, this is a filler?
Mary, you got a question?
Mary Stanton, I just wanted to know what we're doing here. Are you looking for a twenty-hour person to be voted on in June or whenever we have our meeting, say, April? Like, what, what is this meeting all about, I guess?
So what happened was, when we had our public, public, special meeting, I'm sorry. When that article came up, there was a lot of questions. And it sounded like it was a good idea just to have Mr. King come up, and, you know, people had questions about it. We're not pushing for the forty, and all the things that were on Facebook and stuff, there was nothing to do with that. This is just informational at this point. You know, whether or not, you know, people had concerns, you know, if they had any questions, they can ask them directly, and that's the only reason he's here. So as far as we know right now, we're sticking with what we originally were doing. But we just felt that there was some questions that would be asked, and we didn't feel that we were qualified to answer at this point.
So any other questions, comments?
Lee Robbin, do you provide some guidelines to the towns on when it's appropriate for what level of coverage, like burdened hour, bushering, an officer with Shapley? Based upon the level of instances you're dealing with, do you come back and make recommendations that there should be more time or less time devoted to Acton?
Well, I, thank you, thank you very much for that. I, I have felt for a long time that I think Acton is ready for a full-time contract deputy. I understand that there's no appetite for it. But I mean, if you're asking, the gentleman asked me, I think that we provide a great service, and I think we improve the quality of life of all Acton residents. And I believe that if you, if you had a contract deputy full-time, I think it would even be better. But do I give you a recommendation, sir? I, I, I mean, I deal with the board and specifically with the administrator, and I've said that for a while, that I'd like to see Acton have their own contract deputies.
Sheriff King, good afternoon, good evening. I'm Linda Donovan, you probably know me. I have Sean quite well, and I have to say Sean is a phenomenal deputy. I am new to contract officers, I used to live in York, which, by the way, is a very busy town, and we do put a lot of people in jail in York when I lived there. In terms of contract deputies, if Sean's not working, who covers the town?
The general patrol. What, what, I mean, I think he mentioned it before, is we'll have somebody that will be assigned to, to Acton, Shapley, Lebanon, and Newfield. It's basically, we have four, I think four is the minimum coverage of what we have.
Sure, it depends on the team, Sheriff, but quite often, and sometimes I have, I work, when I work overtime, by the way, I really try to finagle that I work Acton and Shapley because I don't want to pick up a case where I gotta work some, deal with like in Waterboro or something like that while I'm over here. So I try to pick up, when I do take overtime, I, I usually call the supervisor, I'm like, hey, can I take Acton and Shapley and maybe one other town? You know, but that's outside the contract deputy thing, but I try to keep my business here. But typically, it's Newfield, Acton, Lebanon. And it's a long ride from Newfield down to Rochester, so I've, I've had to do it.
So how many contract deputies does the sheriff's department have? How many towns have contract deputies?
Acton, Shapley, Orundel has two, Waterboro has two, am I leaving out?
Orundel.
Orundel, two, Waterboro, two, Acton and Shapley. We did have, we did have one in Leamington, then we had some, then we shifted things around a little bit.
And the school?
So, yeah, and the school has two.
So Lebanon, Lyman, Alfred don't have contract deputies?
That's correct.
But you cover those towns?
Yes.
And I know you're quite busy in Lebanon.
Yes.
But they don't pay contract deputies, but they have deputies?
That's correct.
And those deputies obviously have cruisers.
Can we just, this is, you know, they have, they don't, we do cover them, but they, we cover, Lebanon is with several other towns. We don't specifically go to Lebanon, just so that you know. When we, is that what you were asking? I just want to be clear that, because I think what your point is, is that, well, Lebanon doesn't pay, why, why are we paying? And, and the fact is, is that, is that you're getting concentrated service, that you're getting Sean, that if somebody, if there's a copfire in a small street in Lebanon, we're not gonna pull up and say, oh, that's Johnny Jones, like Sean did just the other day. So I think that's what the main point is. It's just so that you're aware that, that Lebanon, anyway, I'll, I'll leave it there.
So the vote that the town had a couple of weeks ago was to, to keep a twenty-hour, a week?
No.
Was to increase to forty hours and dissolve with Shapley.
Okay, sorry about that. Why are we buying a cruiser for the sheriff's department if it's in the budget to have cruisers?
Because the, the, there's a law, and I can't quote it, that if we do something specifically for a town, it can't come out of the general fund, that it's gotta be specific for the town, just like all of his, his compensation, all, all the extraneous benefits that Sean has, as well as the cruiser is dedicated specifically for Acton and Shapley. Now, there are times, there are times, if he works an overtime job, that we have that, we had that informal agreement a long time ago, that he's able to use that vehicle for those overtime jobs, because it was just too pedantic to try to figure out all those, all that, that, how many, how many miles to have.
Well, that kind of sounds, so the county that has the budget for it can't buy the car because it's one specifically, but you're allowed to go cover the county on the other side of it?
We have, we, I think what you're asking me is, we budget for vehicles, but it's in our budget specifically that we know we're gonna get reimbursed by Acton, just like we get two vehicles from Waterboro, we get two vehicles from Orundel. So it's budgeted, it's part of the package that you're paying for.
So you're restricted by state law to provide it, Sean, a vehicle to fulfill his duties in Acton and Shapley?
Let me just say, I'm restricted by state law to provide, to, to pay for something out of the general fund that is going to be used specifically for a particular.
So you can, the sheriff's department cannot provide Sean a vehicle to carry out his duties?
Yes, that's correct, that's our interpretation.
But Acton and Shapley will pay for a cruiser for Sean to drive to Vassilboro for training or court, correct?
Yes.
And who pays for the gas?
Well, I think it's, it's in the contract, you pay a settlement. Is it in?
It's a maintenance.
Four thousand dollars.
I think my last question is, why did you change the contract from a three-year contract to a one-year contract?
I don't know, you know, I mean, I, you know, I, again, the contracts primarily, I'm not, I'm not trying to be coy here, the contracts primarily are with the county commissioners with my concurrence, so I can get that answer for you.
So are they the authority on defining the terms of that contract between the county and the town?
It's basically, yes.
So you advise them, but it's their decision?
The con, your contract is with the county commissioners, I don't have contract authority.
Because we have raised some issues in the past about the contract, and I think suggested some language changes. And it came back that the county, I guess, we thought it was you, but now we're hearing it's the county, was unwilling to make any change at all.
Well, I, I don't, I don't want to hide behind verbiage, but I can tell you, though, I don't agree with changing specificity. And it, it's not Acton, it's like, we've had some, you know, we had Orundel wanting special things, we had Waterboro wanting special things, at the time, we had Leamington, and it was, I called it the customization of contracts, and frankly, I couldn't keep up.
So all the, all the contract offices in the various towns operate under the exact same contract?
Yes, not the exact same contract.
Well, but you get my point.
Sure.
There are any provisions applicable to a Rundel that we don't have.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
James, question? James Hittich, so I got a couple of questions, but one is that we're hiring you guys, is that correct?
You're hiring us?
Yeah. We're paying, we're paying you guys under contract, right?
Sure.
So in business, when you have contracts and you have customers, because we're a customer of you guys'?
That's correct.
No two customers are the same. So if it takes a little bit of work to tweak a contract to keep a customer happy, I would, I'd recommend that. If I ran my business that way, I probably wouldn't have that many. If I ran my business that way, I probably wouldn't have that many customers. Um, if they were all, if I ran it the exact same ways and didn't please customers in different ways to make sure that everybody's budget or service got, got pleased the way they, they want it to be done. And then the other thing I have a, a question about or concern is?
Was that, was that a question that you asked me or is that just a statement?
Just a statement, because obviously you said it is what it is, so I'm just telling you my.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to respond.
Oh, good, good.
I'd like to respond. You know, again, I mean, we've had instances where someone says, well, I want the contract deputy to work, you know, two days and then two nights. Well, for one thing, and I, I wanted to work, you know, Monday, Wednesday, and then take Thursday off and then take, basically, we have, in addition to the contract, we have a union contract that we need to abide by. Also, it's, it's his patrol schedule is set so that when he's up here, that he can, that if something happens, he's got some help. We don't want him up here if he doesn't have anybody close by in case there's a, you know, call for assistance. So that's why, that's one of the things that we've done to try to customize it, to say, and it wasn't you folks. It was another, it was another town that wanted, wanted their deputy to work hard things. So that's why we just said, you know something, the customization of contracts, we've gotta kinda get it back to where it, you know, to McDonald's, where everybody, you go, you get a, you get a cheeseburger in Sanford, it's gonna taste the same as you go out in Pittsburgh. But anyways, okay, thank you for letting me say that.
Then the other question I had was about the contract with the car and overtime and everything else to do with that. So if we own the car, we're paying for the maintenance, is that correct? Hundred percent maintenance, fifty percent Shapley? Um, and then he wants overtime. He decides, you know, you guys have him go work wherever, Waterboro or something. So is our insurance covering that car the whole time?
No, no, I think we, we insure it.
But we're paying you guys for that, correct? As part of the contract?
It's in the contract, yeah.
So then, you know, obviously, anything to do with him getting that overtime, that's coming from you guys?
Yes.
Okay. So it's just pretty much comes down to the car. Okay, so when you, when, when you have a car that a town owns, and I know safety this and that, I get what you're saying, you know, overtime, I understand, being just being devil's advocate. We're, we're paying for something that we're not getting anything out of. Is that correct? When he works overtime in Waterboro?
Well, you know, when he works overtime in Waterboro, are you getting anything out of it?
I want to, I try to stay on these towns.
No, I'm just, but you potentially, potentially.
Can I just say something though? That, you know, cars are the biggest pain when it comes to police departments, when it comes to deputies, they're just a pain because everybody's concerned about the car. But I want you to think about the car as his office. I mean, because for a few years ago, I said, you know something? Towns don't want you using the car when they're not, you're not patrolling the town. Go get another car. And I found that, finally, the deputies went, it's too hard. Because you gotta get in there, you gotta put the computer in there, you gotta set it up, you gotta have, it's.
It's their, it's their debt.
That is.
So I, I just had to spare it for three weeks, the spare car, the county car, I just drove it out for three weeks. And I, we got the car back from repair.
Oh, did we charge the town for that?
What we get for that is, so, so we're not benefiting for something that we're paying for when he works in the other town? Yes or no?
That's really not a yes or no question, but you know, I, I, I understand what your point is.
If it's overtime, the maintenance fee that we're paying is a fixed fee?
It's a fixed fee.
So whether, uh, if he's spending all his time in Acton, or he's spending his forty hours here in Acton and Shapley, and he spends ten hours outside, the cost to the town for the maintenance is the same. The only difference is the mileage. You're putting more mileage on the vehicle. But is that a fair statement?
It is a fair statement.
So it's, it's, it's rare tear as opposed to maintenance?
Which is maintenance that we're paying for?
Which we're gonna pay him at a what?
No, because, no, we're not. So if the car stayed in town, just for an example, and I'm not gonna exaggerate this. And it got fifty thousand miles on it in a year. Or if they work overtime and they got a hundred thousand miles in a year. What's the car worth after that year?
Sure.
So is it costing us money or not?
If it was that kind of difference, I would say it would be good.
And then the other thing I just want to talk about too is that he works roughly twenty hours in town, correct?
Roughly, yes.
So if he works in overtime day somewhere, what is that? Is that ten hours?
It could be ten hours.
It could be four, I usually take four-hour blocks, so I don't like working a whole.
So if, if he left for a shift, whatever, eight, say ten hours for even money, even hours, fifty percent of what we're paying for, for the car, is getting used somewhere else. So that number could be very large. Because we're paying for twenty hours worth of maintenance and half of the car. Twenty hours.
And if he works overtime?
Say he works ten hours somewhere else, that's fifty percent.
He's, he's saying, if I work ten extra hours, if I work a shift, a shift here, and then I work a whole other overtime shift, which would be ten more hours, which I, I don't, which I never knew.
One of the things we asked for was information on when the car left Acton and Shapley. Because then I think we'd be able to answer your question. Is it another fifty thousand miles or is it like five hundred? Because, you know, there's a big difference between those two. For me, if it was five hundred, it's certainly an immaterial issue. I, that's the kind of thing we would like to see in the contract, so that we know, in that forty-hour time slot in particular, when is the deputy not in Acton and Shapley? Or if the car is going outside of, for overtime, what is that? And I think that would just give us an understanding of what exactly we're paying for and how much is it benefiting other communities that, quite frankly, we don't want to pay for. I think that information would help us.
The public just doesn't know enough information of what we're paying for.
Well, I, I.
And, and you guys aren't willing to obviously negotiate. We heard that already, the negotiation is pretty much null of anything. It's just, take it or leave it.
Sure. Well, it's fairly, it's fairly low, I mean, I, I.
I suspect it's.
But we're not making this up, we heard that from this.
Yeah, so, so the concern is this, and this is exactly why we put, we ask for this in the contract, is if it's so minimal, it should be very easy to give us that, you know, list of hours it's gone. So when Mr. Kittredge comes up and asks us, hey, where's our car? Why is it over in Arundel? And say, well, it's only, it's only ten hours a month or whatever. We can answer that question, we can't do that. And, and you didn't add that into the contract, which is what we asked to do.
I, I'm very careful with contracts, because I don't wanna say I can do something, then I can't deliver it. I think that's, that could be a recording nightmare. So every time he leaves this Acton or Shapley?
That's not what we're asking, that's not what we're asking. What we're asking was, you know, we know that if there's a call in Newfield, he's gotta go. Nobody's saying that.
But he doesn't, doesn't charge you folks.
So listen, okay? It's when he's on his overtime doing stuff elsewhere that's scheduled. That's what we wanna know. We wanna know the schedule and stuff. Now, I know you can make that very easily done. As you do the scheduling, that should be something that you should be able to dictate to us once a month or once a year anyway, so that we can answer these questions.
Well, I guess, I guess we could tell you how much overtime he does. I think that would be.
Well, no, no. So when he asked me this question, I said, well, he did a hundred hours overtime. Where? That's what we need to know. Was he out, was, was he here in Acton? Was he in Arundel? Was he in Kennyburg? That, that should be very easily done. I, we don't, I don't think we need a description every time he takes off and he ain't doing his twenty hours and has to scream to Newfield because it's a call. We just wanna know what scheduled overtime is somewhere else. That's simple. And I, that's what I'm gonna ask for this new contract.
But to make, to make it super simple, sorry, to make it super simple, is that, for emergencies, I see the car leaving. But, and I know what you're saying, getting in and out of vehicles, nothing personally against you by any means. But when you're paying for something, we need to know what we're paying for. And nobody wants to pay for something they're not benefiting from when it's an extra thing. This is over and beyond, we're, we already have a scarce here, already. We're paying you for something extra. We're hiring you, we're your customer, okay? And we're asking for something. And it's like you paying for something, if you hired me as a plumber, and I'm like, hey, all right, well, I'm gonna go to your house, well, I might be there for twenty hours, I might not be, but you're gonna pay me for twenty hours. And then you know what? I'm gonna charge you for travel for my guys who want a different job, even though they're not at your job. It's like, there's too much mix-up. If the car is ours, the car should just be here unless it's an emergency, in my opinion. That's what I think. It might make it harder for you guys, you might have to change vehicles to get overtime, this and that. But the town's paying for something we're not benefiting from.
Yeah, it would be against the, uh, the union contract to leave the car here.
No, I'm not saying to leave it here, I'm just saying to use it only for, for emergencies.
I think, I think the first.
If we're paying for it, we own it, what do you mean it's against it? That we have the car.
I think the first step is, with the information, we may find out that this is a non-issue. And then we can all move on. But without the information, it's very difficult to tell. And, you know, quite frankly, I can understand his statements.
Yeah, well, I, I don't, I mean, you don't work that much overtime either.
It should be a really easy paperwork. I'm kinda middle of the road right now, Sheriff, to be honest. I, I do work overtime, quite honestly. The, the only thing I was gonna bring up, and this isn't like involved in like a contractor, this is like an off-the-books thing, so to speak. I'm a field training officer, so when new people come to the department, um, I get, I get these new folks, you know, from wherever they come from. If they're brand new out of the academy or someone out of Rochester. We gotta train them for like, anywhere from a, a month to two months. It depends on their experience and how they're going. It's, it's a school, basically, I'm a teacher. And the classroom is their vehicle. So when that happens, when, what, the bottom line is, the Acton-Shapley vehicle gets parked for several weeks a year because of my position as a field training officer. That, that has nothing to do with what they're talking about, I'm just throwing it out there. I get into their vehicle and I instruct them on how to, how to be a York County deputy. And I do it right here. And they get a more in-depth, you know, education on Acton and Shapley, because I'm, you know, like, I don't leave this area. And I teach them how to be a cop in York County, and I do it here. But my cars parked, usually I meet them at like Ross Corner or something like that. And there your car sits for the day, scaring people into stopping at the stop sign. And I get chauffeured around here and, and yell at my trainee. I, I don't, I don't do that often, but I'm just throwing that out there. Several weeks a year, I, I can't give you a specific thing, but usually it's an average of two, three, four weeks a year, depending on how much I train that year, it's very exhausting. Um, your car actually sits. So that is, I don't know how much of an offset that is, but it's a little bit of an offset, you know?
And then one last question. Are you, you're contracted for twenty hours? Are you, are you here like punched in and punched out as like a town employee for twenty hours?
No.
I don't know. So we don't know if we're getting twenty hours from you guys?
So this might get, this is the Acton and Shapley contract. So you are lumped in with Shapley. And I patrol Acton and Shapley. I, I don't measure right down, it's, it's not like parting your hair down the middle, not that I have me to do that. It, it doesn't, I don't log in, okay, I did twenty hours here. It, it's more of a thought of, okay, I'm going to work today. Yesterday, you know, I, I was on Milton Mills Road here, French Street, you know, trying to deal with the twenty-five zone over there. I hit that yesterday, today I'm gonna go over to Backroad, because Backroad's a problem in Shapley. And it's, it's more of a, okay, yesterday, I visited Shapley Memorial School and checked into that. Today, I'm gonna go see Mr. Ross or Mr. Warren down at, you know, Acton, you know, and talk to them.
Which is great. I think your schools, you being present at your schools is great.
Yeah, I appreciate that. But you, you, it's, you're, at the end of the day, you're a unique contract, because you're lumped in with another town. And it's, sometimes it's a long way from French Street to Ross Corner, but it's, you, I've gotta balance it out. And I, it's, it's an approximation, it's not an exact science.
So now with the twenty hours then, I guess, let me go back to the forty hours. Is, are you guaranteed forty hours in Sha, Acton-Shapley a week?
That's, that's what I do.
Okay.
That is my job, I, I am the.
I didn't know if that floated, I didn't know if that was like a thirty, fifty-hour type deal, or do you, you're employed for forty hours a week that you can pay for, and you're giving us that in both the towns?
Yes, that's, that's what I do. When I come to work, it is to do Acton-Shapley, that's.
And it's for four, full forty hours in a week?
That's what it's supposed to be, yeah.
Okay, just asking, I don't know.
Well, I just ask once in a while, you know, if my partner on the Newfield runs into some crazy or something, or there's a major crash up there, I, I flip up there real quick and take care of that. Sometimes, sometimes they're running down here to help me, so it, it evens out.
If you're out of the town for an extended period of time, do you charge the town or do you make adjustments?
No, like in good examples, last year, I, I, there was an unattended death up in Newfield. And unattended deaths, not like a murder or anything, if someone died.
Okay.
But that, that takes a while. So I was up in Newfield for like three hours that day assisting my partner with that. And when I go into our, our program that we do for payroll is called Kronos. And we, I go into Kronos and I, I pick general fund for those three hours. I carve that out and carve those hours out and the county pays for that, because I'm not.
So we don't get charged for that?
Correct.
Is there a minimum amount of hours before you do that? Or do you do that every time you leave Acton-Shapley?
I don't do it every time. Like I said, if I run up there to back him up, you know, on a traffic stop, like someone's getting antsy or something and come back, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna charge for that ten minutes or something like that. But if it's like, if I'm gone for a substantial amount of time, then yeah, obviously, I'm, I'm not gonna charge Acton-Shapley for that. I carve that out.
You know, and, and that would be one way that we can, that we could respond to when the car leaves, leaves the town just by, when you don't charge the town because you went out of the area.
You can track it by Kronos.
Yeah, you can track it by Kronos.
Sheriff, can I say one thing?
Yes. Come on up. We gotta get you on the TV there, because there's people there watching.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. One thing I would add, the other night when you were in the yellow flag, how many hours did you go over?
Well, that, that was four to eleven, that's seven hours.
And who pays for that?
We did.
Meeting?
The general fund.
The general fund, so. When he goes over, it's no hours, we don't charge Acton-Shapley.
We should, we don't. I gotta talk to you about that, because I actually billed you folks for that, because that was, um, you know, I wanna use professional language. That, that was your guy that I had to deal with and it started, he started early on in the, in the Acton-Shapley shift.
Wait a minute, the sergeant told him not, not to do that, and he didn't do that, and yes.
No. He did not go to do that.
If it goes on overtime from something that initiated here, no, we're not gonna charge you for that.
I wouldn't think so, because you're supposed to be here anyway.
Yeah, right, right.
But it's an act, it's an acting call.
Yeah, yeah, but you're not making sense here. Because you're saying, okay, we pay her forty. Okay, we know it is forty, which is just not gonna go home. But our county tax does pay for him to be out there anyways.
Right, right.
I, I got it.
Hold.
Hold.
Certainly. Correct me if I'm wrong, our current contract ends December thirty-first, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And Shapley's contract ends as of December thirty-first, correct?
Are they on the same?
Yeah. Do you have any indication that Shapley intends to renew their part-time contract for the coming year?
I haven't heard anything different.
I have spoken to this board of officials personally, and they are interested in renewing it.
So they're interested in renewing the twenty-hour contract?
With Acton, correct.
Okay. Uh, if Acton does not renew that contract, we lose deputy service as of December thirty-first?
Correct.
That throws Shapley in a bind, right?
That's Shapley's issue.
I understand that.
They have a backup plan.
Everybody here I know is wondering, and this is not really directed at the sheriff, because he can't answer the question, what's Acton gonna do? Are we gonna renew the contract?
Well, you have to remember too, that Acton has already appropriated six months of the contract in twenty-twenty-five.
I understand that. So if we do not renew the contract as of December thirty-first, the funds go back into the undesignated fund. That's where they should go.
Correct, as, and they would.
Okay, I'm just saying.
Yeah, no, they would, you're right.
Okay. Now, it was pretty evident with the special town meeting that we had, that the majority of the voters who were in attendance did not support a forty-hour-a-week deputy contract, period.
Correct.
That, that was very, very clear. And personally, I don't support a twenty-hour-a-week. That's my personal, that, my personal belief. Calls are dispatched upon the severity of the call. Is that not correct, Sheriff?
Calls.
When, when the deputy sheriff, and I'm not speaking about our deputy sheriff, when a deputy sheriff gets a call from dispatch, okay? The calls are dispatched, you're not gonna dispatch a, a blue light siren individual for a trespasser, which you will for somebody running around with AK-47, is that not correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Thank you. So as far as response time goes, it depends upon what the call is, the nature of the call, okay? It may take him twelve minutes to get here. Okay, it may take him 12 minutes to get here. It may take a deputy coming from, I don't know where, 30 minutes to get here. Same priority call. I just, you know, I don't feel that the town is really, I, I'm not saying that the town is not getting some benefit. But it's getting too expensive. And I'm, that's my opinion, and it is what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Sorry, I have a couple more questions.
Is this redirected?
That's cross-examination to you. Just kidding. How many road deputies do you have in the sheriff's department right now?
Twenty, thirty.
Thirty? And how many contract deputies do you have?
Five, uh, two in the school plus five in the world.
So seven?
Yes.
So you've got 23 road deputies out there. I don't see them patrolling. Shaun is absolutely patrolling in Acton, but what are these other 23 deputies doing? Are they covering Lebanon that don't have a contract deputy or Alfred that doesn't, like, are, are they getting the same service that we're getting? But they're not paying a contract deputy?
See, I, I, I do not, I would not agree with that statement. You know, I think the towns that don't have a contract deputy don't have the focused knowledge that Shaun has. And you know, and, and I, the gentleman earlier said he doesn't think that it's necessary or it's too expensive. I can't put a number on it. I can't tell you, gee, Shaun doing a traffic stop on H Road stopped somebody from breaking into a house because they saw the blue lights and said, oh my God, there's a deputy around. We just, you know, I know that the, the word preventive patrol is kind of passe, but it does matter when you have people around. And it really matters when you have Shaun stopping into different stores, seeing people, stopping cars. It, it, it does affect, I think it improves the quality of life. Now, there are towns out there that are, that don't have a contract deputy, but, um, and I think that, you know, we don't have the knowledge of, um, the, uh, the players, if you will. You know, I mean, there's a town close to you, isn't there? We've had, well, Lebanon for heaven's sakes has, has had drive-by shootings. They've had, uh,
Sheriff, can I, can I say something real quick? So when I came out of detectives, I, I was the Waterboro guy for nine years. So I did one town for nine years, and that was my thing. And I, I did there what I'm doing here. I went to detectives for a while. I came out of detectives and then I went back into a zone patrol. I've done both. I've done contract deputy work and I've done regular road work. I like the contract deputy work the best because I like visiting, you know, schools and I worked for Buxton Police Department before that, so I like a municipal setting. And when I got here to county, um, from Buxton, I, I got a big eye-opener. It is not the same. And in my mind, when I worked for Buxton, you know, there's county deputies over the river in Hollis. They were right there. And then I came to work here and I got a big surprise. It's not like that at all. You are running. When you're a zone guy, you're running. So when I came out of detectives, I was covering Waterboro and Arundel. And Arundel. And, but not Goodwins Mills. Now we took over Goodwins Mills, Lyman area. And God help that poor soul that has to cover that zone because they're doing it by themselves generally. And I, I would make a joke at a Ruggel Fire Department. I said, I'll see you guys in a few minutes. I'm going to try to go home and something in Waterboro. But when I get to Waterboro, there's going to be a crash down here on one, and I'm going to come all the way back. I used to do code runs, sometimes several times a day, going through Goodwins Mills, going back and forth. When you're a regular zone deputy, you're running, running, running to calls reactively. I tried to stop no rush back then. Like, I, I didn't run traffic when I was in that, in that duty because you don't want to get into something and get tied down and then have your partner have to cover your calls. It's your totally reactive. One of our, one of our guys, I, I won't mention his name, he just went to midnight shift from day shift because he needed a break. He, he was, he was getting busted so hard on day shift running to these calls as, as a zone deputy that he said, enough. He cried, I'm going, he just, there was a spot on midnight, so he, this is a seasoned good guy. This is a very capable deputy. He said, I've had enough. And he went to midnight shift to, to get slower calls. So it's, it, well, it's not the same. It's, you're running. And talking to Sergeant Netto, Matt Netto, he said, you know, quite often, we, they bring their lunches, you know, the, where most of us are married guys, that we bring lunches to work, you know, save money. A lot of the times, they're bringing their lunches home. I mean, they're not eating their lunches because they, they haven't had a chance, these poor guys. So it's, we, we are covering, but it's, it's not the same. And it's
It's like, yeah, just a comment. You said you used to live in York. I mean, yeah, you're, you're going to see, you're going to see officers all the time. I mean, frankly, if you live in York, I mean, because you have, they probably have four, four offices patrolling York, like we have four offices patrolling 550 square miles. So yeah, you're going to see a lot more. We also have a couple of unmarked cars. I mean, again, I mean, it's, I'm not saying that you're seeing something that's an unmarked car, but you know, we do have two, two unmarked cars out there. We don't have a lot of folks. You know, this is not, you know, I mean, Shaun just said it very well. I mean, we don't have a lot of deputies out there. Four deputies, I get a kick. I used to go down to, I visit a friend of mine in South Portland. I'll go down there. They'll have four, four officers on a traffic stop. Now look at, that's what, that's what's covering the, all of our towns. So I, I can absolutely understand why someone says, well, I never see anybody. Maybe you don't, but then again, you might go home today and you might see two of my deputies stopping people. It's, it's very, very fluid. It's just as many people that say, I never see you guys. I get complimentary calls all the time saying, your guys are great. You guys are, you know, you're out there, you're, you're helping people, you're, you're stopping, especially the unmarked cars. They love that. But I digress. Sorry.
So when you started your presentation, you said that you cover 14 towns, but the state police covers
That's correct. I, I, I was going to make that clarification, but then I just moved on from that. That's correct.
So you cover, you cover eight towns. Cause my question, you, you cover eight towns, but you have, um, I'm getting messed up on my numbers. I think seven officers that are contract deputies.
Correct.
You've got 23 other officers. Why aren't they patrolling the eight other towns, including Acton-Shapley? And the reason I say that is Mr. Denny Camp had brought up at the town meeting that we had had special details this summer because there's complaints against speeders in this town, and there's speeders in this town. There's no question about that. But we had to pay a deputy to do a special detail. And I want to say, I might be wrong, about $80 an hour. Why? Why are we paying $80 an hour or some special detail? Why are we paying for that when we've got 23 road deputies? Why aren't you doing that as a regular patrol? I mean, we've got Shaun. Shaun's busy.
But, or a lot.
I, I, I don't, I don't, listen. The town came to us and they wanted those special details and we gave them. We, we did.
Why are you charging the town for it when you've got?
Because they want to get them.
So you can't say to your 23 road deputies, you know what, today, officer, instead of being an Alfred, just a road detail in Acton.
Jeremy, how much, how much speed grants do we get? And have any of those details been in Acton?
Um, yeah. So I just wanted, the town came to us for those outside details. That was not, they, Jen came to us and, and we filled it. We also filled about eight other details. So we actually got $10,000 today, um, from Bureau of Main Highway Safety. Uh, last year, we, we stopped 100 cars on those main highway safety details. About 100, I did the math today. We bought eight details. So we, we were at Acton-Shapley on these details paid for by a grant for main highway safety. But the town came to us and said they want outside details, so we filled them. And, you know, I can tell you too, you know, one of the areas they wanted was East Shore Drive and Youngs Ridge. And Jen said, there's a serious problem there. So we put a deputy there. And the deputy called me after about an hour and said, can I move? There's, I'm wasting money. There's no speeders here. So I said, no, but you're going to stay there. And when you're talking to them, they're just saying that East Shore, we had East Shore and, um, Youngs, Youngs Ridge. So from another clock to one o'clock, um, the 16th of October, 35 vehicles on volume, high speed was 24 miles an hour. He went to Youngs Ridge at 13, at one o'clock to, to three, uh, so 90 vehicles, high speed was 43. So I went, went putting vehicles there, went putting cruisers there, but you know, a lot of times it's, it's not a problem.
But I think, I, but I think the key point that, the takeaway I want you to get is that the select board was being responsive to citizen complaints. Citizens complained to them. They didn't go out there with a radar gun and say, oh my God, people are speeding. They got the complaints. They hired us to do that. This is what we found. So.
It sounds like we're being charged because we asked for an additional detail. Had we simply asked for additional coverage because we have some speeding issues, would you have done that without charging us?
Well, if we have, if we have speed grants, yes, we, I don't want
No, you'd have 30 officers or
I think she's painted kind of an unclear picture of the sheriff's office. Okay, 30 deputies. Right now, we have two that are on medical view. Okay? So now, now, now we've got, now we have less. We have three detectives. We have five sergeants. I mean, we have to have supervision and frankly, you know, I mean, we, we have our deployments, but that's a, that's a, not an accurate depiction of what, um, of, of
A little so-called without two deputy patrols.
I'm, I'm just trying to understand the statement you're, the way you're making that, that we ask for it and therefore you're being charged for it.
What's wrong?
And we'd love to have it without paying for it and
But you do, you, you, you do. We got 10 grants today. You're going to see deputies in the next few months to the end of the year on this grant doing four-hour blocks.
So if we get a, uh, three or four citizens come in and, and they're complaining about speed on a particular road, if we call you up and say, could you spend some time on this road outside of Shaun? Can, can you spend some time on that? Would you do that?
Yes. We have done, we have done, we have done that in the past. H Road, H Road, H Road. That's all I ever hear about is H Road with these big trucks, with the rocks coming off the trucks. We've had people up there numerous times because we got these calls from people, not basically from the select board, but from citizens. And we've sent people up there. Again, and
We sent police the next morning. We had, on this, on this pit that you made a complaint on, I took, the next morning, the city police, the commercial vehicle was outside that pit.
I remember looking at the reports that we had on the special detail, and I understand East Shore and there was another one, Young Ridge.
That's better.
It doesn't appear that East Shore, that was very productive. But we got reports on the other details. They were, there were a lot of stops made, a lot of tickets issued, and, and I suspect that had a positive impact in the community of doing that. People are aware, we got officers, they're going to kind of slow down. And I think that's what's going. But if we could do this, maybe we don't need special details, but when we have a concern about a road, just pick up the phone and call you. You guys, you know, put some presence on there. That, that would be great.
If they have
And just, can I, can just make
You know, we're
He forgot a grant.
Well, we're hearing these comments. We hear this from every other town. We hear this from every other town. And also, yes, and Linda was right, the state police have primary coverage for five of our towns. But we'll often go into those towns when the state police aren't available. So we are covering those towns, you know, and at night, the state police don't patrol at night. We're covering all those night calls. So I mean, you know, we, we're doing, we're keeping, um, we're doing the best we can with the resources that we have. If you don't think it's enough, I strongly urge you to contact your county commissioner. They're the ones that hold the purse strings. Contact your county commissioner, say we need more people. And, and you know, I, I ask every year for more deputies. And, you know, sometimes I'm successful and sometimes I'm not.
Can I say one thing about details? You have a good point. The four-hour blocks, so he can go there and not get called away. Those four-hour blocks that we have in the rain. He's going to go there, he and she, and they're not going to get called away. We can still do it when they're working, but Murphy's Law, they get there for 10 minutes and then they get a crash or a disaster. So, but the four-hour blocks, uh, so they can go and not be bothered. And you're going to see, you're going to see, be warned, you're going to see deputies soon because we just got the money today, um, working at Acton-Shapley. You know, it'll be a four-hour block, they're not called away.
Okay, your zone guy is frequently thrown in with Lebanon. You're usually thrown in a pool of Lebanon. So it's, I hate to keep throwing Lebanon under the bus, but it's, it's a very, very
It's a very busy, it's a needy town.
Troublesome town. And it comes to Acton and Lebanon quite often. They're, they're getting sucked down there. So it's, you, you tell a guy that's, that's busy trying to deal with trouble down around hometown mobile, you know, Youngs Ridge Road is calling, and the natives are restless down there. They, they got to stay around Lebanon.
Thank you.
Is that it?
All right.
Unique. Anna McKeaton. First of all, I'd say thank you, guys. I happen to have some police men, and I get a little bit of a window. He's out in Massachusetts. I get a little bit of window about the schedules that they're on, the, um, unfilled positions so that they have, they have to work overtime, the requests from the public. And, and it's not an exact science. We don't have the emergency wards filled up all the time, but they have to be there all the time. So sometimes they're not going to be out arresting people or, or checking unattended deaths. Sometimes they're not. But with 20 hours a week, I'm surprised you do what you do. And I would vote for 40 hours a week, especially some time.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Hi, I'm Bernard Broder. Um, I live on East Shore Drive. Um, first of all, I want to say how fortunate I think we are to have Deputy Samborn here, um, in particular. I think he's just the highest caliber, um, law enforcement professional that we could have. I have, what I have been upset about in the time I've lived here and the contracts have come up is the apparent lack of flexibility on contracts. And I understand from Sheriff King that that may be the county commissioner's purview. Um, so I think maybe we need to get their views. And, you know, they're elected officials. We need to let them know that we are not getting from our perspective, the benefit of the bargain, um, from the sheriff's department, based on restrictions placed on it by them. I'm not looking for work, but I do wonder, are there openings for road deputies at this time?
We have, we have two openings right now.
Okay. So why I'm asking that question is I've heard a lot tonight about the benefit to Acton that we have a contract deputy, but conversely, I think the county benefits from the munis, from the municipalities that have contract deputies. Because especially if you have openings, we are subsidizing coverage. And, and I am not someone, um, that says if it doesn't benefit Acton, then we shouldn't be doing it, or we shouldn't contribute in any way. I think we have to have a broader picture. Um, but that said, you know, if there are vacancies, then obviously you can't provide the coverage that you would with a fully staffed patrol. And so where are the deputies going to get called from to fill those needs? I assume from the towns that are paying for a contract deputy. And that's not equitable. And that should be built into the contract that, you know, it doesn't have to be for every single mile that somebody dedicates elsewhere. But there should be a threshold, a point that it ticks, that it does benefit us. So I think, you know, the contracts, the, the one-year versus three-year being totally unnegotiable, I don't think is acceptable from a municipality's perspective. I don't think the contract is as tight as it should be. I mean, I can't think of specific examples, but I can tell you every time there's discussions with the select board about the contract, it seems like there's a lot of things that aren't negotiable. That, again, if, if the sheriff of this county cannot negotiate or alter, customize, then the county commissioners need to be accountable for that and, and do so. As I said at the beginning, I live on East Shore Drive. I appreciate the traffic details we've had. And I don't say this to be sarcastic, but if you're going to have a traffic detail on the lake road, parking a cruiser at the end of the road doesn't do it. You've got to hide the vehicle. I mean, that's why you're not catching people. I mean, seriously. Those are the only times, only times I have seen it. I do see Deputy Samborn patrol East Shore Drive, and I appreciate that. But, um, you know, I mean, you can park next to my garage and hide a cruiser and watch it, but if you want to park at the end of the road
Okay, can I just, you can tell he's a good attorney because he said all kinds of things, and I didn't get a chance to say anything. I just want to be clear, when you talked about the commissioners, you know, yes, the commissioners will do the contract, but we work together with concurrence. And I will tell you that I agree that we were getting a little bit too customized with everything. And I couldn't keep up. I couldn't remember, okay, who wants that report? When do they want that report? Well, you know, who wants that? This, we have to kind of not have him work on this day. It was easier for us just to kind of get it more standardized. Now, okay, so I just want to be clear that I don't want to just, I'm not gonna throw a point to the commissioners because I was part of that decision. The other thing, you said subsidizing patrol. That's a, that's a valid point. However, I just want to keep everyone in mind, keep this in mind. Our core mission is to provide policing services. That's our core mission. At one time, we canceled the contract. We canceled Limington, when we had Limington, because we were paying overtime too much elsewhere for, to take care of the core mission. So we're very cognizant of that, that we won't do that. Yes, we have two vacancies. Yes, we have two people out, but at no time do I feel that we're subsidizing that, that the towns, because I think that would be a bad, subsidizing patrol. Is it a cost? Is it good for us? It absolutely is. I want you to think about this. I am an elected official. When something happens, like, you know, the speed, my God, that Keny doesn't know what the hell he's doing, all these speeding cars. Well, nobody says, "I'm gonna call it my commissioner." Nobody says that. They say it's the sheriff that's not doing it. And I'm, we work with what we have. Now frankly, she, Linda Donovan, talked about how many deputies we have. We're pathetically understaffed. This is pathetic. Do you know, the Department of Justice says in a rural community, you should have 1.7 deputies for 1,000 people. If you look at the Department of Justice, we should have 56 deputies. We've got less than half that. But, you know, I say that, but I will tell you another thing, is the people in the towns that we patrol have an outstanding quality of life. They do, because of the dedication of our deputies. Again, I don't, I don't think we have any slappers, and I say that with absolute honesty. I don't get many complaints about the deputies' conduct, but I get a ton of compliments. I'll just say this, you know, I'm extremely proud of the police force that we have. And I think it's not, not management, it's not anything other than the quality of people that we have. We have two vacancies. We have people lined up. We're not exactly the highest-paid department in your county, but we have people that wanna come here because we're the York County Sheriff's Office. Joyce.
Tom, do you think we're...
No, I can wait.
Okay. Joyce Backsheath.
Hi.
West Shore Drive. Do you mind if I take us off of contracts?
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Do you mind if I don't talk about contracts?
No, certainly, you can talk whatever you'd like.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Please relate it, right? Careful.
No. One of your slides said that we had four burglaries, or burglaries, excuse me, in this past year. Correct. Okay. Now, we're not big. We don't have a lot of miles. We have a lot of, we have crimes. Jennifer reads a report from you when she gets one, and it's for this, that, the other thing. How many felonies do we have in Acton? Felonies?
I don't have that information with me.
Would you say, you scratch your head and say, "Oh, Acton, they're at it again"? Felonies, are you calling for detectives all the time?
We had our first drive-by shooting five minutes walk from here last, this year, unfortunately.
But it was related to a few others in Lebanon.
Yeah.
But, you know, can I just, can I just hold that point right there? Why don't you have that? You folks have been, were one of the first towns to have a contract deputy. You always, you have had a contract, you've had a heavy police presence here for what, ten, twelve years? Ever since I've been the sheriff, you've had a contract deputy.
Let me make my point then.
Sorry, go ahead.
My point is this, for what we have, contract deputy, and I personally know if our contract deputy is someplace else on another call, we will have a deputy or a state police officer. The response time may be longer, but they will be there. It happened at our house. Two-year-old grandchild hit the panic button on our burg, on our house system, our security system, saying that we were being invaded. And this person came from Alfred, I think. So he wasn't there in twelve minutes, but he was there. We have those. So with the job that you're doing and the twenty hours a week that you're here, is, is it actually... I'm trying to say, we have a very good quality of life. We don't, at least, I never hear that we've got, you know, murders, mayhem, you know, this is not like watching Law &amp; Order every day of the week, hearing some kind of major crime going on. We don't hear that. I do understand that there are bad things that go on, domestic abuse, things like that. Well, unless Shawn happens to be having coffee in the driveway of the house where that's going on, he's not gonna get there anyway for fifteen or twenty minutes, depending on where he is. We have a good quality of life. I believe you're doing the best you can. So I'm not quite sure why forty hours, which I know is really off the table, but you think it's a good idea, I know. I don't think what could it be worse? What would it take to increase the twenty hours we have besides you hiring more people?
Oh, I think that's a question for the select board.
No, you're hiring the deputies, not the select board. You need more deputies in this, in your...
Oh, I think, I do, absolutely, I do.
So, then we need to be vocal.
If I can just be, if I can just, you know, I wish that I didn't have to come to towns and have contracts. I feel you too. I wish we didn't have to all be here. But we do, this is the internet with love. You know, I mean, I think that, that having a contract deputy able to be assigned here, I wish it came out of the general fund. Yeah, Shawn's in Acton, that's it. You know, Shawn's got Acton, and then we can take care of that with the general patrol. But it's, I think you have a good quality of life because of the deputies. There was one other thing that you mentioned, I wanted to kind of follow up, and I can't remember it now. But, oh, I, Shawn, as best you can. Why do we have contracted, you know, because you have a good quality of life here. But didn't, wasn't there a situation just a few weeks ago, other than the yellow flag dude? What about this guy that was, was he a sex offender or something that you went down?
No, Donald, he's on, I'll say his name, he's on the registry anyway. Is it Donald? Yeah, yeah. What, what...
What was the situation with him? Because I remember, I, somebody called me about it, and I mentioned it to you.
Well, according to the people that called up, he was sitting in front of their house.
That's right.
And then he, during a snowstorm, and then the daughter had walked down to Ira Miller's store across the bridge in Milton Mills. And so the mom went out and said, "What are you doing?". And he said, "Uh-huh, you wanna ride somewhere?", according to her. So this is a problem. And she got that, she had his license plate, he drove away. Turns out, he's living illegally up the road. He's registered out of Milton as a sex offender, multiple offender, real bad guy, like he didn't do it once, which is bad enough. He did it a few times in New Hampshire, and now he's shackled up over at his deceased father's house on Box's Ridge. So I ended up dealing with him, real defiant guy, wouldn't register in Maine. I charged him, he wouldn't register. I got an arrest warrant and threw him in jail with the bail condition saying, "You're not getting out until you register as a sex offender in Maine." He might be in the wind because there's different vehicles at that house, and I know that because I checked on him. I go by, I had to arrest him a few months ago because I didn't show up for one of my court days. So off to jail he went for that. And I don't think he's living there right now, and I did my homework on him, he's still registered there and nowhere else. So that guy may, I'm not sure if he's living there or not, but I don't think he is, and I have, that's, I gotta check on him. So anyway, sorry to ramble a lot about Donalds, but that's what's going on with him.
So we didn't have a rape, we didn't have anybody abduct anybody, and I, I think that this anecdotal story is clear of why a contract deputy is a pretty good idea. Because he, can I just, let me finish, one, one more thought. You know, and not only, I mean, when he first encountered him, I remember whenever Shawn, I would talk to Shawn, he would say, "Well, I went by that guy's house", and I'd forgotten who the guy was. But he keeps going by the house, and he keeps going by the house now, just checking out the cars, finding out who's there. I mean, again, you're getting, I know it's a passe-aid thing, but you're getting a lot of preventive patrol, that things aren't happening mainly because he's aware of it.
You guys have another sex offender, and I don't think he's listing his place of work on his registry. Yeah, I'm creeping on you guys. Sex offenders are watching here. If you haven't listed your place of work correctly with the Maine registry, do so because I am watching.
Joyce, do you have any, any other questions?
No, that's, thank you for that.
Well, we're both a half into this, we do have business to... Dennis Rock, can you come on up? You got a question?
In the past, years past, we had selectmen that would go to the county commissioners' meetings. And we also had a representative from Acton on the finance committee of the county commissioners. We don't have any of that anymore. Is that correct?
They don't attend, no.
Okay. Well, we don't have, like, chicken...
A delegate, no. I mean, that's been fifteen, twenty years, yeah, for long gone.
Well, okay.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just saying that would help influence maybe the county commissioners and give us what we want. We talked about tonight for coverage and more coverage, it might influence them to give the sheriff's departments more money.
May I make a comment there? You know, if you watch the last budget committee meetings, there's, there's a couple of people on the budget committee, and the budget committee in your county has real power. They're not just advisory. They set the budget. And the, my budget hearings are painful because all they wanna do is cut. Why do you need the detective? There's not that much crime. I mean, it's a constant, constant, constant. I mean, it's, so, you know, I do ask for things and it gets cut. But, you know, and what you're saying is great, if I could have more, have the citizen who say, "Yeah, you know, he needs a few more deputies", that would be fantastic. But it, the budget committee, they, in their mind, in some people's mind, they feel, "Oh, we gotta cut the budget that he presented". Now, I work with the manager, I work with the commissioners, we try to come up with a livable budget. And it gets before the budget committee, and sometimes it goes through and sometimes it doesn't. But it's, it's very painful when they cut.
The other thing is, is two things, and I'll be very short. I really don't feel that comfortable when Shawn comes and puts a handcuffs on me, holding up the jail, and all the threats he makes, every time. I didn't want to put that out in the public, so.
Yeah.
Grant, whatever you said, same, you know.
Shawn, can you get a picture of that next time?
The other thing I'd like to say, and this is very dear to my heart, Shawn, and we, in the past, deputies have too, they've developed a relationship with their children at school. And with all the other issues we're talking about, to me, that is probably the most important that we get out of Shawn being here in town like he does and frequenting the school, because these kids are what we're looking at for the future. And I know having kids in that school, that he has made a very positive impact on our children, and that to me is very, very important. And thank you for that, Shawn.
Thank you for those comments.
Let me get off one of these times, will you?
Is it gonna be a quick one?
Yeah.
Okay, you're a repeat offender, so.
My opinion on this, how's that work?
No, this is just information.
No, I know, but like, you're voting for the next contract.
Well, right, and I guess, and what you should, you guys should keep in mind is that when you approved in April, at the April annual town meeting, part of general government that paid for, you know, the deputy services, that pretty much tells the board that you're okay with the twenty hours, because you've already funded it for six months, so.
Yeah.
I mean, it's my opinion to the board, they, I mean, they already have a little approval on that twenty hours, and they need to just sign the contract once we can work out the agreement.
But the contract's for what?
Well, it's for, well, it's for a year, so if by chance you don't fund it...
Through June 30, 2025.
No, the contract is through December 30.
No, but the funding is through June 30.
Through June, so if you don't, so we have town meeting in April of '25, and you choose not to fund it for the last six months, this contract is good through December of 2025, there's a provision in here to get the town of Acton out of it if you choose not to fund it. But you've already approved it for six months, so there...
Yeah, no, that's fine, I just didn't know what it was, because everybody's talking, I just didn't know, like, how that works. So it actually goes, so the approval for the funding is what holds on it.
Exactly. Exactly, that's an A. You've already approved it for six months, so you're all but guaranteed a contract on some...
I'm sure I'll just answer the question, that'd be longer, so, thank you.
That's a point.
I appreciate that. I just wanted to say thank you to you and Shawn for coming and your associates here. I, I think the policing that goes on, are we done with the public comment?
Well, we never closed it.
Uh, we were, I thought.
Right ahead.
We're gonna take one more comment, so we're pretty ways into this.
Hi, Steve White, East Shore Drive, and thank you very much for helping out with Ask Him the Kamals. And do you have a comment? At 11 o'clock in the morning, you're not gonna get anybody. Now, you're not gonna ask them to answer, you're wasting your time. It's 7:10, 3:05. And Ask Them to sit my driveway, and you'll catch the police car. But anyway, I, again, appreciate it. And I appreciate you guys being there.
Sure. This is the third person, East Shore Drive, what's going on down there?
Exactly. So anyway, I just want a clarification. You're not wasting your time, tell me it's not a war. 11 o'clock in the morning, you're not gonna catch me.
I was gonna be quiet while he was speaking, he was very respectful, he was, "Time, we're not done, so please keep the chatter down if somebody's up here speaking."
Because walking your dog between 7:00 and 10:00 in the morning, you're taking like...
Can you get a plate number?
Yeah, I have many plate numbers, but I'm not gonna give many. I've gone to the deputies in the past, and he said, "No, I can't, I can't take your word for it. Take a video, and I'm going by, and you bring it to the town." So I'm not gonna do that. I'll be out here all day.
Well, you can call me personally and give me the plate number.
Yes.
You know, I'll send them a letter.
I'd like to say, I don't think the community or this board has any issue with the payday policing activity that goes on, and quite frankly, I appreciate it, really do, personally. I think...
Excuse me, sir.
I think the issue has to do with the contract.
Yeah.
And for me, it's a lack of transparency that would allow us to understand where the offices are, and to one extent, are they in town or not in town, and how that's affecting what we're paying for. It may in fact be that everything is in great shape, but I think the inability to get that information creates some suspicion or concern that there's perhaps something there that, some activity that we shouldn't be paying for. So I appreciate the fact you want a common contract. You don't want five of them, I get it.
Let me ask you, Frank, can, I'm so sorry to interrupt you, but what do people think we're doing? I'm just, what is it that you think we're doing?
I think, I, it's in our towns. We don't know the extent, and I think that's what we've been saying, we don't know the extent to which the officers are staying in town, and if they aren't, how, how much time are they spending out of town? And what does that cost the town? Are we getting, although I heard from Shawn today that when he was out of town, he didn't charge us for that. So that's good, so, but when we tried to negotiate a contract before, we put through a half dozen things.
With, with Shapley?
With Shapley and Acton. And it simply came back and said, "No". And there was no discussion, no opportunity for any interaction, and I think as customers, we deserve that. So our, my personal concerns... So our, my personal concerns are not with the day-to-day leasing. It has to do with the administration of the contract and having transparency around that. So I just wanted to make that clear. It's nothing to do with Sean and his work.
Mr. Lencio, do you mind asking the people here, where do they think we are?
Oh, I don't know.
Where do you folks think we are?
Transparency.
So, so.
Transparency, you already said.
Where do you think we are?
So that's why you're here tonight.
The prominent place.
Roland, if you're going to speak, you got to come up, but we're not taking any more comment on this point.
Okay, what we're going to do is this then, okay? I'm going to have some internal communications with the chief and, and Sean, and we'll, we'll, we'll find out. I mean, every week, the chief puts out things that are happening. I mean, that is, that's unbelievable transparency, frankly. And, and, but yeah, I mean, I, people want to know if he leaves the town, I mean, yeah, he, he does live in Newarkville, so he does leave to go home. I mean, we do have that, but you know, I mean, it, it, I mean, you know, he's not, he's not checking in here and then running over to Newfield.
Let me clear, I'm not looking to micromanage the sheriff's department or the patrol in the town. It's just, we got stiffed on in the last contract negotiation, where we asked for some basic information so we can understand, you know, where they are and how much time, if any, is spent out in the community, and the answer was no. And that left us, it left me anyways, with the uncertainty, why, why couldn't we get that information? So I, I think you may find that, maybe not, the concerns you're hearing here today, if you were to talk to your other communities, they may have similar concerns. And so maybe there are some amendments that could be made to the contract, even in fact might find would be helpful to the other communities. And then you keep it all as one contract, covering all your communities. I understand why you want to do that. That I could operate with that.
On top of that, I honestly think the town of Acton, most, 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 the majority of the town of Acton has appreciated what the county does. When an individual yelled out transparency, I think that's a big deal, you know? Because the big, the problem we have is this, when, say, Roland, we'll use Roland because he's set up the podium, says, why, what happens, this, this, and, and we can't answer those questions? And we don't look very bright, and we signed a contract that we can't answer those questions because, well, they're not answering. So I, when, when we do run a contract, I think, you know, we're going to, we have to, because of, you know, some of the comments have been made with Doc. It's good for everybody. It's going to be good for you, it's going to be good for us, we can answer those questions. I don't think anybody in the town of Acton thinks you guys are screwing us all, okay? But there has to be some transparency, and Roland, you got a question?
I was going to answer his question.
Okay, well, no.
He asked a question.
Who did?
Did you ask him a question, sir?
Well, he was asking me to ask you, and I didn't ask you it, so.
You had a very good job running this meeting anyway, so.
Roland, if you please, we're.
I don't know, I don't know, keep it simple.
It was going good.
It wasn't until you showed up, Roland.
We'll talk afterwards. I don't think he recognized you.
Can you, can you speak, Mr. Roland, or House after?
Absolutely.
That would be, absolutely. And Roland, can you please sit down so we can get around to the meeting?
Would you like to have your rapid, Mr.?
I'm going to close down the forum, and we're going to go into town business.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Do you have a phone? So, uh, Roland, I want to give this guy my. Good, we got to continue on here. Yeah.
So I, I move that we amend the.
Come on, we're still on the meeting, so.
I move that we amend the agenda to executive session in the new business, 10A to number three on the agenda.
All in favor? Okay, do I hear a motion?
I move that we go to executive session MRSA 40568-dash, 681-dash personnel at 7:30pm.
All in favor?
I move that we come out of the executive session MRSA 405681-dash personnel at 7:54pm.
We made a decision?
Second.
All in favor? Sorry, I'm out of. I'm ready for a German already.
And we still got to go to the top and work our way down.
Yeah, but we should, we could make a decision on this here.
Yeah, um, we had some really impressive candidates for the EMA director. I had a couple levels of interviews because of how highly qualified each candidate was. But I think Jennifer, Tom, and I, we did a lot of interviews, and we came up with a recommendation. And so I would recommend that we offer the position of the EMA director to candidate B.
B.
Yeah.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, now we're going to bounce back up to Warren Bills. All signed.
All signed.
Okay, approval of the agenda?
Emotionally approved.
To approve the agenda as amended.
Minutes of the last meeting?
Um, I move to approve the minutes of the November 13th, 2024 meeting.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Liaison updates, let me skip that to the county administrator. Oh, I'm sorry, I took way over the county administrator.
You always do that.
Well, you know, when you put, when we go to a agenda like this, we bounce around, just out of my element.
Very quick, I promise, very quick, just to everybody in TV land, don't forget that we have our Thanksgiving dinner next week, our Neighbors Helping Neighbors Thanksgiving dinner. Our derms are at noon time, but dinner is at 1:00, everybody's welcome, it is free of charge. Look out there, there's still people out there. We are the baskets, if you haven't heard, we started with only five baskets, usually we do close to 20. We're actually up to 10 now, we've had families reach out, so, but Lions Club gave us a $500 donation for Thanksgiving baskets, so Neighbors Helping Neighbors is funding the baskets this year with those donations, and then people are graciously bringing things from dinner, so please come.
You, you go?
I plan to be in there myself.
I'm just trying to make it to.
And yes, and thank you for all the.
Oh, pretty red squad.
Unfortunately, I'm going to be with family.
Okay, okay.
But I have an item to treat, LeBron.
I'll, I'll try to make it.
You're good. Thank you guys for that.
Okay, thank you. We all set?
Believe me, I'd rather be here, I mean.
Yes.
Ah, you want to skip the liaison updates tonight?
I, I don't have any to read.
I got one quick one.
Quick, quick, go.
Very quick. This new skid seat was delivered today.
Congratulations.
So we've got that. Jennifer's got the pictures of the old one, hopefully.
No, I don't have them.
Okay, I'll send them again. But the two head guys up there, say, hey, guys, Bob and John, were trained on it by the salesman, have delivered it, so they've used it, they run it, Jennifer insured it today. Yep.
The, the individual that came up and looked at the old machine, said that he may have, he may know some people that would be interested in that. My guess is he would see it on this website, but do we have any issue with just sending it to that individual so he knows it's out there, or you just want to do it through the?
No, we can send the direct link as well.
Okay.
I think that's probably the best thing to do is go get a direct link.
Because he, he, yeah, he would, he knows the condition of the machine, and hopefully could move things along.
John, you agree with that?
Um, I just got a couple of site walks tomorrow for the planning board. One at 3:30 on Westshore Drive, and one 4 o'clock on 13th Street.
Weather committee, Jason is not, Jason knows funding today.
Jason knows it's going to rain.
Yeah, and then they cancel, that's what I'm telling you, so check the website, absolutely.
Um, so for our fire department, just interviews for the EMA director, recreation committee, I might meet in meeting with the rec director, and for the conservation enforcement committee, and just a random thing for the legislative policy committee meeting, I attended the fourth and final meeting for this year, this, today is the last stuff, so.
Well, I guess I might as well jump in on this, municipality grounds.
Yes.
So we see we got a trailer out here, have they sent their insurance?
I got the insurance.
Okay, good.
Yes.
There is another trailer coming.
Okay, thank you.
And, uh, well, it was supposed to be in here today.
This is the state or Gromon?
Well, so, so they're both Gromon's trailers.
Okay, fine.
The state, because that's what I asked, I, the individual I spoke to, I said, we need insurance and this and that, and I said, I don't know how to do with the state, I don't know how that works. He goes, well, I don't know either, he said, there are trailers, I said, oh, good.
Cover.
So, uh, but, uh, they did call and ask me, they've got a bunch of telephone poles being delivered, because I guess they're replacing poles, okay, and wanted to know if we could use the parking lot of the rec. And they said they would need to use that, a piece of that till like February. Uh, I, wanted permission from the board to, what I'm going to do is I'll call the rec director, probably.
That's the same.
You want to do that?
See, I'm meeting with them tomorrow, but.
Okay, if you're going to do it tomorrow, if you could just let me know, so I can let them know whether or not it's going to be there.
Is that an opportunity to try to get some additional things out of them?
Yeah, I mean, you know, they're probably.
Whatever you might need, but, you know.
Well, once they, once they tear up the parking lot with their equipment.
Think we can get it, pay it?
Easy does it, guys, so.
So what is it worth from the rec director, just if she has a?
It's not really going to be any need, I guess, because one of the things is the ice rink, so if they put a bunch of stuff, that was going to impact, H would go any other events, and.
It shouldn't be rude to Tuckham.
Well, that's what, that's what I'm saying.
I just want to get confirmation.
Yeah, no, no, I, I messed up, I was even doing the ice.
So it's not going to be long, long term, but, um, I guess these poles are like months of a back order, so when they get them, they got a lot of way ahead of time. So, um, so if you would, if the board's fine with that.
I'm fine with it.
Okay, Dan, if you could talk to Amanda and see if there's any plans for an ice rink or what the deal is, and then get back to me, and I'll let them know.
One other quick thing while you're on property.
Oh, yes.
Tom and I met with the two members of the church on Monday about the property out here and the monuments, and they've agreed to give us the little square out here where the monuments are. So just the side of their sign, up to the parking lot, and down to the property line.
Straight line along here.
Beautiful.
The straight line here, then up and over just the side of their sign to the H road, that little square, so we'll own where the monuments are.
I think we have to have a clear, I think, should file.
Well, what's going to be nice about it, we don't have to worry about who's going to be doing what.
Right, right, and they've, they've just got to, so what we're going to do, have Sebagotek put that on the map, on the plans, send it to them to get their approval, they get the legal side taken care of, and that'll be that.
I told, and, and we said that our council would do the drafting of everything, and we just send it to them, and they want their council to look at them, they can, but I don't think they will. And then we'll just sign them and begin the recording.
And the only other thing that was missing, not so much missing, but, Tom had a great idea to put this in there too. Um, they do have eas, they, they don't, they don't have an easement to come up I driveway and get to theirs, property. So we're going to do a deed in right away.
That's.
Kind of in exchange for the property that they're giving us.
Well, plus, they let us park in that parking lot. That's probably.
In exchange for the property that they're giving us.
Well, plus, they let us park in that parking lot. Get it down there, go to Jersey Barrio.
It cleans up, it just cleans up some stuff that was done in the past on kind of a written agreement, but not a deeded, registered, recorded agreement, so.
Awesome, okay, great, okay, well, I guess we did the liaison updates anyways. Uh, department head committee chair updates.
Don't see any.
Don't see any, okay, old business none, new business, we've already done that. Well, we're down to.
Motion to adjourn. Oh.
No, no comment, because there's nobody here.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All in favor? Thank you.